Okay, all yours, Mayor.
All right. I would like to call the Wilsonville City Council meeting of January 21st to order for the work session at 5:55 PM. I'd like to, um, does anyone have any comments on the order of agenda and the items on consent? Are there any council concerns? All right, hearing none, we will move to our pre-council work session and Mr. Montalvo, please. He is going to speak about the closed-circuit TV inspection system in vehicle. Hello?
Good evening, this is Martin Montalvo, Public Works Operations Manager. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm going to share a screen and share a PowerPoint with you here in just a moment. And please confirm that you guys are seeing the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm here to talk to you about CCTV inspection. It's closed-circuit TV inspection. It is considered an industry best practice for figuring out the current status of our underground infrastructure. It is, um, the easiest way to describe it is a colonoscopy for the city's underground system. It's a bit what a CCTV inspection looks like. It's a permit requirement under both our sanitary permit and our stormwater permit. As I mentioned earlier, it's an industry-accepted practice. And it's preventative and reactive maintenance that allows us to reduce the overall cost of maintaining the system and then also plan forward with our capital projects as what we need to plan for long-term, long-range projects. Our current in-house capability is what we call a push camera system. Basically, it gives about 100 feet of reel. It's limited in the size of pipe that we can effectively TV. Video quality really isn't outstanding, so we can lose some clarity and some quality to find some minor imperfections that we could fix easily now, and then we won't get to them until we actually pick them up with a better inspection, and they can cost more. And it's currently not into our GIS and asset management system. What we're desiring to move to is, this is an entry-level CCTV system. It is fully GIS and asset management integrated, so it'll work in with all our mapping tools, all of our design tools that we have for capital projects, and also our asset management system. Has capacity for 1,000 feet of reel, so it'll get us into some of our longer sections of pipe without us having to pull out and re-mobilize to a different location. We can TV anything from a 6-inch pipe up to a 30-inch pipe, and with a couple of the options that we're looking at, we can actually go to an even larger pipe up to a 40-inch pipe. Video quality, the full 1080p. And then the camera head has the capability to pan and tilt, so we can pan, tilt, and also zoom on some imperfections that we have in place. This system comes with an enclosed chassis. It's basically its own transport vehicle. Currently, we have to dedicate a different vehicle to take the push camera to other locations that could be doing other work. The cost for this system on the high end, we have it at $125,968; on the low end, $98.78. This is using pre-approved governmental pricing contract that gets us a considerable discount. And I am advocating for the $125,968 to really get us going with our own in-house program. So we have, in the past, previously been doing this through contractors. So we had a three-year contract that we recently went into. The low bid for that contract came in at $133,483 annually with a CPI adjustment incorporated into the contract annually. The second-tier contractor came in at $160,000, the third tier at $163,000. The fourth and fifth tier were almost twice what the low tier was. So how do we fund this? So we're not asking for any additional funds. Later this evening, you'll be looking at a budget amendment. This is one of the items that's incorporated into the budget amendment. And we're simply asking to take the money that we would have used for contracted services and move that into capital expenditures to allow us to purchase the piece of equipment. So 60% of the funding will be coming from sewer, 30% from storm. We won't be moving any money from CIPs. We'll be incorporating all of the costs from sewer and storm. So we also looked at renting. Is renting a viable option? So some of the rental outfits that are available, which are few, have some considerable fees, and they also have limits in terms of how long you possibly rent. So one of the local systems is a high-backed company. It's a good system, but it's $43,000 for a six-month lease, and then they want the equipment back so that they can put it onto the market as used equipment. Another vendor is Proteus. They're out of Colorado, and that was also $46,000. Remembering, this is an annual permit requirement. We didn't think renting was a viable option for us, and it's a program that we want to be able to continue year-round. So as I mentioned earlier, the budget amendment you'll be seeing later this evening, this is how we're proposing to pay for it. 35% of it coming from the sewer operations contract services, 35% of it coming from small sewer projects. These are all already approved expenses that we're going to be paying for the contracted component. 15% from the stormwater operations, conveyance maintenance, and then another 15% from stormwater annual sewer pipe repair. Total cost is $125,968, as I mentioned earlier. That's the end of my presentation. Try to keep it quick for you. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Lee, yes?
Uh, yeah, so what's included in this? It looks like it requires a van. Are we providing the van or we're buying the van that comes fully loaded?
It's an all-in-one package, so it's a Dodge Ram van. That gets us to transport, so I don't have to go and steal another piece of equipment.
Piece of equipment, yeah.
I have the, um, it comes with a controller seat inside of it, so there's a console. There's a computer for running the entire operation from within the vehicle. It comes with the reel. The transport, which, the transport is basically a four-wheeled robot that connects to that control cable that we send into the pipes. Everything's self-contained in that entry-level Ram van.
And, so then in terms of the vehicles included in that, and in terms of the personnel to run it, um, is that one full-time person or half-time or a quarter of a time of somebody from Public Works? Who runs it?
So we're not asking for any additional staff. We have the capability in-house. Our previous program had one of our staff members doing all the QAQC from the contracted component. So the contractor would do the work, and then we had to spend the time and visually inspect it. So now, that person will actually be doing the work and doing the QAQC simultaneously. Having the vehicle itself and the equipment gives us the capability and more flexibility to do that, and it doesn't cost us any more in terms of annual expenditures, and it doesn't cost us any more in terms of staff.
Sounds excellent. Okay.
Any other questions? Oh, Counselor O'Grall?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, and this seems like a very good move. Just real quick, what's the lifespan of the equipment or vehicle? How great of a win, really, will this be for us?
No, that's a great question. So this goes into our fleet replacement program as soon as it's received and accepted. We programmed 10 years on the replacement lifecycle, so whenever we buy any capital asset to go to fleet, Scott Simonson programs an expected lifespan. And then what we'll start doing is in next year's budget, you'll see in fleet an allocation to plan for the eventual tenure of replacement.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Counselor Lindell?
Um, I just was, when I was reading the executive summary that was on page 6, you probably, and I'm sorry if this was already discussed, but it looks like on the fourth line that it says that the municipal separate storm sewer system permit to inspect portions its underground infrastructure. Does that, there's a word or two missing there, so I'm just trying to make sure I understand that the permit, um, is it a permit that is, or you're required to inspect them, those underground infrastructures annually? Or, um, tell me again what that's supposed to say?
Sure. I'll tell you what, the easiest thing for me to do is I'll share my PowerPoint with you again, and I have verbatim what the permit requirement is in the PowerPoint. So can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me maximize this. So this is verbatim what the MS4 permit, that oversees our stormwater system, and then the sanitary, NPS permit that oversees our sanitary system. And you can see in there, both of them says for MS4, the co-permittee must develop and implement a process for the inspection, maintenance, and cleaning of the MS4 related to its structures. So it doesn't per se say you have to use CCTV, but it is the industry-accepted best practice for accomplishing that inspection component. And then further in the permit, it actually gives us an expectation of how often you should be inspecting your entire system. And I did include that, but for the stormwater system and the sanitary system, we're supposed to TV the entire system every five years.
Okay.
Goal is, we have 160 miles of both systems, so 80 miles of storm, 80 miles of sewer, and the goal is to get one-fifth of that done every year.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor West?
Um, thank you. It's amazing to me how between the sewer system and the stormwater collection is basically the same amount, it'd be like, it's the same amount of miles as going to Seattle in our city. That's, I don't know, just the thought of that blew my mind. Am I correct, I just, to simplify what this machine actually does, this equipment, when we bought our house, or often you buy a house, you pay the inspector to come in and scope the sewer, and they look for tree roots or crushed, or, and so we would, instead of just, as a homeowner, doing it on purchase, on a city level, best practice is to continually monitor, for environmental reasons and for maintenance reasons, always be doing like this basic maintenance to make sure infrastructure stays intact. And it's my understanding that we were paying quite a bit to have this done, but once we have our own service here, then over time, you could save a significant amount of money. Am I just, like, am I encapsulating this idea correctly?
No, you're absolutely correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the detail and the questions we've had. I also appreciate very much that we're staying on top of maintenance and looking ahead and also forestalling even bigger bills that would come from not being proactive. So, thank you very much. Have we covered this topic?
So the only other thing that I'll mention is we wanted to cover this with you, as you'll see it in tonight's budget amendment. We will be coming back in your February meeting with a resolution and a agenda topic for the actual contract to approve the purchase.
Thank you.
Time, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Montalvo. And I would like to now move to Ms. Kerber, talking about our public works complex.
You're muted, Delora.
There you go. Good evening, Delora Kerber, Public Works Director, and with me this evening is Andrew Kraus, he is the architect with Scott Edwards Architecture, helping us work on the public works complex.
Good evening, Angela.
So we'll just jump right in. So here, we're doing a presentation to you to give you a little update on what we've achieved so far with the public works complex. Um, so currently, the public works facility is spread out all over the city, and one of the major areas that we use as storage and work area is the three-bay facility, which is at Memorial Park. We've been working there for many, many, many years, and we, back in 2008, had gotten a temporary use permit because technically, per the code, a site on a public park needs to be for public park purposes. Thus, we got a temporary use permit. We have renewed it numerous times. I believe the next time we would need to renew it would be July of 2024. So we're currently using the space that is not really intended for us. So, and then also, live this little history, back in 2015, we did a city facility master plan, and that was to help its inventory, the city facilities, examine our future space requirements and resources, and develop a strategic plan for future facilities and how we should go about, you know, for expansions at the city. So looking at all the existing services, needs, future service and needs for all the city facilities, we came up with goals at the end of that analysis. Goal number one was to provide the police department with adequate space. In that conversation or in that master plan, there was discussion about how that could best be achieved, and the determination would be to keep them in the current building, the Public Works, the PWPO building, the Public Works Police Office building, to keep them in the city court, close to the community center and city hall. And in order for that to happen, they need to move out public works so they could have the whole building. That fit nicely into goal number two, which was to take the public works functions that are spread out all over through the city, of our staff as one place, our equipment in other storage, six different places, and move that all into one consolidated location. So that was the outcome of the city facility master plan. With that in mind, we, in 2016, the city purchased 7.5 acres of land from Washington County for $1.7 million, and this property is immediately adjacent to and north of the smart fleet facility there on Boberg Road. So, and then continuing on with the thought, we need to now develop that site to better, to get a sense of how it would work, is we hired Scott Edwards Architecture in March of 2019 to help us develop a conceptual master plan. That conceptual master plan, we brought to council back in September of 2019, shared with you kind of generally to lay out some of the elevations, the materials and such. Since that time, we have now been working further to refine the design, and eventually we'll here get into construction drawings. And so in 2020, we've been developing the, what we call, design development plans, which you'll see here in just a minute. So as we are moving forward through all these various phases, we're coming up with some design approaches of how we're going to design this project. I'm just going to hit a few highlights. Andrew will direct a few more of them when you see who. So one of the, first and foremost, is that it needs, this facility needed to have function, making, driving form. So whether it was how we laid out the site, the materials that we're using, where we should place a boot wash, all of those things, it was more about what is the function and making sure that that was going to work. And then the form can come later. Long-term planning, as we were developing our conceptual plan, is we wanted to make sure this facility would meet our needs for 20, 30-plus years. And so what we did is we thought about looking to the future, and what is it, not only the growth of the city, but what is the program that we would have, and how would we expect our department to grow to support the services of the city's operations, maintenance elements? And so with that, that helped drive the sizing of the buildings themselves and the layout of the site. Now, recognizing that beyond our day-to-day operations, the public works is the first responder, and we have emergency responsibilities, that one of the things that we really focus on is acknowledging that our site needed to have seismic resiliency, and so that if something were to happen, that we would be able to just continue on working. Another element that we really took a lot of time was sustainability. So we had many conversations about doing the leadership in energy, environmental design, also known as LEED, and recognizing that we could go for a LEED certification, we could do a Green Globe certification, but we thought the first and foremost thing, um, oh, I'm sorry, do you guys not see my PowerPoint?
Nope.
I was thinking you were, okay.
Just you.
Starting the app.
Just you.
We just assumed you were.
All right. I'm sorry, um, all right.
But we, I think we trapped. I don't know if we have to start, can we start from here?
But you're going to want to see these pictures. So can you see it now?
No.
Yes.
Yes or no?
No.
I cannot see anything except for the Wilsonville logo or you.
Oh, you know what? I am so sorry.
You've got to share your screen, Delora.
Yeah, I realize that now. Okay, all right.
Now we can see it. Can you maximize it more?
I, yes.
A picture paints a thousand words. All right, um.
There we go. Okay, I'm just going to, this is where I was. We're just going to, okay, all right.
But now, oh, do we have your audio? Okay.
All right, there we go. Okay, so seismic resiliency, the LEED, again, it was more of a, not necessarily wanting a box to check or a plaque to hang on the wall. We took both LEED and Green Globe. We traded our own sustainability, because we really, at the end of the day, we wanted to make sure that it was grounded in practicality and ability to succeed and keeping costs, you know, being reasonable, our costs. Now, we also incorporated green energy technology. It is a state requirement, and so that is going to be achieved through putting solar panels on our warehouse building, which we will then feed back into the grid and get credit for it. Energy efficiency, as we were working along with that one, is we recognized that the state of Oregon has a pretty tough energy code, but where we could, we took opportunity to help increase the efficiency. And at the end of the day, every decision that we made was about fiscal responsibility. So that was kind of the mantra as we looked at it. So looking at what is the most efficient, what is the most durable, what is the low maintenance materials, what is the best construction strategy, all of those were things that we really took into account as we went forward with this project. So just hit on a few of the key highlights about this project. First and foremost, it will be wonderful to put all of our personnel, equipment, and functions in one location instead of being spread out. The second part is that getting us out of our building will then free up space for the police department to be able to achieve their goal, and getting us out of three-bay will give parks department more flexibility in being able to use that site. So in the new public works complex, we're looking at a secure site. The public works is one of the largest users of equipment, materials, and supplies that are, like I said, spread out all over the city with various levels of security. This will give us an ability to have it all among a secure location. We have incorporated into the building the ability for a public use conference room. We have what we call the public area and the private area, and there would be opportunity for people to come in and to borrow the conference room to use. We have a large room inside, a big conference room, which will also double as our incident operations center, and it would be able to also be used as a training facility for all of city staff. That's one of the things that we know, that time and time again, when it comes to large training areas, you know, keep in mind this will be post-COVID, is that, um, that they could use this area, and so it has a couple duties. The other one is that we'll have this city central warehouse. So not only will the warehouse area be used by public works, we also are in conversations with the parks department, recognizing that there could be equipment and materials they would store at this site, so they would not have to trailer from the east to the west side of the building, or, I'm sorry, of the city. We'll have a de-cap facility. This is where we dump spoils that we had collected through either excavation or cleaning the catch bases, where we can dry them and haul them. If you don't dry before you haul, you pay a premium price when you take it to the landfill. Truck wash, again, since we have the second-largest number of vehicles in the city, having our own trucks washed would add, free up the space over the fleet building, and actually would add capacity for them to be able to use it. But the last element that I'll touch on is the gender-neutral conference room. You know, there's a lot of discussion about equity. We talked and we looked at other examples where they had a male and a female locker room, which typically, as you can imagine, is the males is really big and the females is really small. But there's this beautiful hybrid of where you can have the locker room itself, it's gender neutral, and then you have individual changing rooms, or toilet rooms, or showers, where people can go lock themselves in, do, you know, changing, showering, whatever. And we really believe that that will be the best, most flexible for us to move forward. I'm going to take a breath, and I'm going to let Andrew go from here.
Good evening. Thanks for your attention. I get the easy part of talking about the graphics now. Just to give you a preview, I'm going to show you a site plan, then a sort of aerial photograph of the site, and then I'm going to move into some exterior building elevations, and then finally, we'll take a glimpse of the actual floor plans for the project. So, as you can see from the north arrow on the bottom right of this drawing, north is to the top. Boberg Road is along the right-hand side or the east side of the building. Smart facility is to the south or the bottom of the sheet. So we're immediately adjacent to the smart facility, and this is an undeveloped site, but the access road that's labeled at the north side of this site is an existing access road. So our site topography really guides the design here, and I will begin by saying that the most crucial part of a public works facility is the actual yard area. That yard area is where the main traffic is utilized, it's where maneuvering is required, it's where the various service buildings are located, so that is the critical piece for the entire site. On the front half of the site is the admin building and the associated visitor parking area to the north and the employee parking area to the south. Now, topography on this site begins with a high spot on the upper right of the drawing, the northeast of the property, and it drops diagonally across the site by nearly 18 feet. So it's a fairly dramatic change of grade, and that helps to drive our overall design here. And so working with that topography, the placement of the admin building actually functions like a large retaining wall, and it holds back the grade to allow for a lower transition of grading for the overall service portions of the site. Included on this site, the other features are orientation of the building that's geared for solar access. So you'll see on the building labeled warehouse, there's a fairly large solar array on that building. That will in fact generate power for the overall site, and the slope of the roof and orientation of the building is all geared towards that solar access. The buildings themselves relate to each other from a functional standpoint, allowing employees to transition from the admin building to the warehouse building, where they then depart for their daily work off-site. Long-term planning for the project was a key feature. You'll notice to the left side of the warehouse building, a little dashed line there, that represents a future expansion area. In the same way, on the north side of the admin building is expansion space for that building. Now, I want to make it clear that when we talk about expansion space, that would likely occur beyond a 20-year window. So this design is intended to accommodate public works for the next 20 years. Green technology, as we talked about with the solar exposure and the low roof pitch, is a high priority for us. You want to go to the next slide, please, Delora? Here's a sort of aerial view of it, and without getting into too much detail, you'll notice- Here's a sort of aerial view of it, and without getting into too much detail, you'll notice the various outbuildings there, there's a vehicle wash building that, uh, Delora is putting her cursor on right now, there's a de-camp facility in the upper right-hand portion of the, of the project that Delora has already explained, there is bin storage for bulk materials like gravel, rock, et cetera, part of which needs to be covered to protect it from the elements, um, sand, for example, if it gets wet and freezes, it can no longer be used for snowy roads, so covering that is important. Right in the center, we see this warehouse building, and the solar array atop it, and then of course, in the lower left is the admin building, and you're beginning to sort of see the impact, when I said that it was used as a retaining wall, you'll notice that the street side is a one-story building, but on the opposite side of the building, between admin and warehouse, it's actually a two-story building, the equivalent of a daylight basement, which then creates an outdoor courtyard or, and a, and a service area to connect those two buildings. Energy efficiency is a high priority for us, and all of the buildings are designed with energy efficiency in mind, um, in the case of the admin building, um, not only do we have LED lighting for low-energy use, and sensor-activated lighting and plumbing fixtures, but we have controls that assure that we're, we're minimizing energy consumption. The warehouse building as well, um, operable windows, sunshades, canopies, skylights on the, on the warehouse building, all help in that desire for energy efficiency. If you wanna go to the next, thank you, Delora, look, this is the view of the admin building from Bowbird Road, on the right-hand side would be that service access road. You'll notice the materials look a bit stark, um, really, that is part of our overall goal, as Delora mentioned, where function drives form. This is a very functional building, all of the buildings on site are very functional, so we're trying to use very relatively low-cost materials that have low maintenance qualities to them. So, on the left-hand side of this admin building, you're actually looking at a tilt-up concrete structure. The corner of the building, to give it some sense of change of materials and break down that hardness of the concrete, is a metal panel system. The entry portion of the building then is softened a little bit, it's got an exterior of wood cladding, along with lots, lots of daylight. You can also see some of the solar shading above the window openings on it, and as we transition to the next slide, we'll see the opposite side of the building. So there again, you're seeing the two-story tilt-up concrete building, that includes storage and underground parking below it, and then at this same level, as the lower portion of this building, you can walk directly over and enter into the warehouse building. So again, long-lasting durable materials is the goal here. The floor plans, this being the administrative building, on the left-hand side is the lower plan, you'll notice that there's a parking area in that lower level, and from there, you transition directly into the building, which is really the core service areas of the building. So it's really focused on utility areas, and a large locker area. In general, employees coming from the warehouse area or shop areas would enter the building and first off, wash off their boots, clean themselves before they enter the building, they would then translate or, or progress through a dry area, where they would remove their wet clothing, hang it to dry, there's a laundry area associated with that, before moving into the locker area, and as Delora mentioned, unisex locker room facilities. With that, it then means that toilet stalls, bathroom facilities, and showers are all individually controlled, so you go into your own shower stall, shower room, or you have privacy to do that, but the overall open locker is unisex and open to everyone. As we go upstairs in the building, one of the main features is on the right-hand side of the building that's identified as a conference IOC area. IOC stands for Incident Response Center, that is similar to what you've heard of as an emergency response center, without all of the technicalities associated with that, like redundant plumbing systems, for example, that seems to be beyond the scope of this function. That being said, the IOC and the break area across the hall from that is all set up to be able to act independently from the remainder of the building, so in an emergency, that portion of the building can remain functional, an emergency generator will provide power for it, and it can be more or less a self-sustained environment to allow us to support other emergency worker, working staff. I think that pretty much covers the admin building, the warehouse building consists of a number of vertical bays of the building. A vertical bay essentially is a 24-foot wide bay that has an overhead door at both ends of it, allowing vehicles to come in from either the north side or the south side of the building, as well as being able to flow all the way through the building. So, that is the ultimate in safety, one of the biggest issues associated with any sort of vehicle maneuvering is the backing portion, that's where most accidents occur and most injuries occur. This flow-through design allows that to be easily resolved. Elsewhere in this area, you'll see a shop building, or a shop area for the wood shop, a paint shop, and a sign shop, and on the lower portion are crew storage areas, which are simply chain-link partitions, allowing each crew to control their own equipment and materials. On the far left is a area of the building that's roof cover only, so it's an unconditioned space for loud, larger outdoor vehicles, for bulk material storage, anything that becomes a transitory sort of changing, um, operation-wise. Um, in general, this building is economical, it's all metal panel on the exterior, including the roof, the roof is called a cool roof material, the color of it allows for solar deflection, reducing solar gain. On the interior, it's energy-efficient lighting, essentially anywhere that we could, we focused on durable, low-cost materials and energy efficiency.
Okay, so, um, we're, and we're gonna, recognizing we're a little time straight, we're gonna move on, so.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. So, so the next part is, where, where are we for cost? And we have finished up the design development drawings, which were about maybe 80 percentage, uh, in, in design, and with that, we have, um, our consultant has determined the construction cost estimate with contingencies, because we're still, um, you know, formalizing or finalizing, is at around $17 million. So that is for the construction portion of, of this project. Recognizing, wanna make sure that you understand all the costs, we also are estimating, uh, an additional soft cost for the design and construction drawings, of which we actually have already spent, uh, $1.6 million out of this $4.2 million, for the development of the construction drawings and the designs you've seen so far. And so, as we were, um, reviewing, uh, what other agencies had done with their public works facilities, one of the things as we talked to them is, kinda got a sense of it, that the costs that we're looking at are really, uh, in line with what other public works facilities. It's really a difficult, uh, challenge to be able to do, uh, apples-to-apples, because each facility is unique unto what it is, the core responsibilities of that agency, you know, what elements and programs do they have, how they do their work. So, um, but, but the, the, the numbers that we have here are really not, um, uh, out of, out of line. So, recognizing this, that, here's our next step, we will be in the next few weeks submitting a land use application, um, for this project. And then, the next step is to finish up our design development and construction drawing, because we'd like to have this full, uh, bidable package, so that if grant opportunities or other opportunities make themselves available, we would be ready to turn, turn immediately and start on that. And then, uh, also, at the end of that, which probably will be about summertime finishing that up, is we'll get yet a revised, another revised cost estimate. The more refined you have of the information, the, the sharper the pencil can be as to what the actual cost estimate would be. And then, with this information, we will be working with finance and the consultant to put together a financing plan, so determining, you know, uh, what, what are the funds that would pay for, what is the proportionality of that, and how might we be able to fund this project, looking at, uh, various of, um, different scenarios, and then when we get that complete, which I'm hoping would be, uh, in the middle of summer or so, is to come back to you and share it with you, so that you can help us determine how we wanna move forward for the funding of the project.
Thank you, Ms. Kerber, um, that was, that was really, um, and, and Mr. Kraus, very thorough presentation, I do want to, um, let everybody know that we are behind on time, we do have time for, you know, quick questions, does anyone have some, uh, question, Council West?
Um, I, thank you, thank you very much, um, I just need a little bit of clarification, and I have a couple of design questions. Clarification on, we are gonna be LEED certified, um, building, or, I was a little, I didn't quite understand when you were going through that, if, if we were gonna have those certifications, that we met those goals and those benchmarks, and the reason why I asked that quickly is because the previous council, I'm sure this council moving forward, one of our big, common, um, objectives, and was, was, we pride ourselves on being environmentally friendly as a city, and looking at the environment as an asset, so I think you guys have been very mindful in that, but, um, I don't know if you could further explain to me if, if we were meeting those benchmarks, or we're going beyond them, I guess that's one of my questions.
So, so we determined that instead of doing just the LEED, and then you get to the end of the process, fill out the paperwork, you pay your $50,000, and then you get a plaque, say that you're LEED.
Okay.
So we determined that we were gonna take the best elements out of the LEED program, the best elements out of the Green Globe program, and merge those two together to create our own sustainability checklist. So, uh, we would not necessarily meet the LEED requirement and get the plaque, but we would meet everything in the intent of.
Thank you.
Sustainability.
And before we go to your other two questions, Council West, I didn't see if others had questions. Council Leehan?
Um, yes, I think this, uh, looks excellent, I've been a big supporter of this, because I think we have been, uh, you know, limping along with Public Works spread all over the place, in, uh, in oddballs, all nooks and crannies of the city, uh, so, thi- this looks like an excellent design. I had a question about the, um, architectural rendering, where they, we were looking at the front of it, uh, that, there, exactly, is that a lawn, or what is that? And, and what's with the, uh, and what's with the little, um, uh, spaces in the sidewalk that have lawn-like stuff in them, uh, did we forget about street trees, or what happened?
No, we didn't forget about street trees, it's, it's just a rendering, I mean, actually, those technically would be the, uh, the ADA ramps, but we wouldn't have the grass in between. And so, we haven't really finalized what the landscaping plan looks like, whether it would actually be grass or vegetation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, my, my suggestion would be, if you don't have street trees, then you don't wanna try to keep grass alive in between concrete, um, uh, but if you do have space for a big tree, which it looks like you do in that other big lawn area there, put a big tree in there, a big tree or two, in other words, do not waste a big tree space with a little crappy tree.
Okay.
But put a big tree, or two big trees in there, and forget the lawn, that would be my suggestion, uh, and, uh, and it, it will, it would soften the building, and we have done that really throughout all of our industrial areas, we have, uh, significantly sized trees in our industrial, up 95th and, and all the rest, so we, we don't wanna lose that in this deal, so that, that's my only, uh, suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, again, um, briefly, Council, I'm not seeing, um, Ockervall, Council President Ockervall, yes.
Thank you, um, thank you for the presentation, and, um, it's exciting to see these plans as they are being developed, I, I wondered, um, this, you know, this presentation gives us a sense of, of what we're moving towards, and, um, I appreciate seeing the floor plans and hearing about the thought behind all of the different design elements. To help us understand a sense of the scale of this, could you give us some idea of what the comparison of that, that large conference room that was detailed in the floor plan, that's also the, um, the IOC room, yes, um, how does that large conference room, what does that compare, for instance, to, um, the room in City Hall that we usually do our work sessions in? Um, I think that might help kinda ground our concept of, of what this building size looks like.
Yes, so, so you're exactly right, the, it might be a bit, a tad smaller, but it was meant to be comparable to what Willamette 1 and 2 are.
Okay, okay, when, when we have the divider open and.
Yeah, so, so you see, it, it, see at the bottom, so the upper floor is about 12,700 square feet.
Oh, I see, yes, okay.
And the bottom is about 11,000 square.
Okay, thank you, I think that's helpful in, in us being able to visualize this, thank you.
Thank you. Um, have we, have we covered all the, the design questions, I did have one point I wanted to add. Council West, briefly?
Yeah, super brief, I guess, um, and they're, and they kinda go together quickly, is, um, I love to see the, the solar panels on the warehouse, why not on also the admin building, um, and I do wanna know if we don't have those technical certifications, are we eligible for tax credits for all of this green effort we're doing? And I wanna really say, I got a big smile on my face when I heard that you're doing a cool roof, those are innovative, that's super cutting-edge, um, thank you for mentioning that, I noticed, um, and that is, uh, I'm really glad to see us take that direction. Um, so I guess those are my just two quick design questions.
So, so part of it is, and, and Andrew, I, I, I'll take that, is, uh, the reason it's not on the admin building is it's, that, that is a parapet wall, and we have a lot of HVAC systems up there, and so it really, it was really not conducive to, um, matching that kind of roof, for one. As far as, uh, credits, well, the state requires us to spend 1.5% of construction cost for green energy technology, um, but we will keep pursuing like, uh, um, Energy Trust grants and other opportunities like that.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, one thing I wanted to add is just recap how this is going to be, I think, much more efficient for our human resources, the people who are now moving back and forth across the city with the equipment, it's gonna take better care of our equipment, and it's also going to, um, provide, kinda, we're going to, in, in some ways, free up space for the police department that they very much need, so we're taking, that whole building would, they would have much more space, of course, we're not talking about the design right now, but that's an important part of this. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, Delora, and, um, we will move on to our next presentation now, and look forward to hearing more about this later.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew Kraus. And now, I would like to move to Mr. Ottnad, and he, where our topic is the Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council, Mark Ottnad, Public and Government Affairs Director here, uh, this evening, and indeed, um, the topic for this, uh, discussion is the potential of city participation in the Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition, and, uh, the city has been invited to, uh, participate as a named member of the Board of Directors on the coalition, which is a partnership of local and tribal governments. on the coalition, which is a partnership of local and tribal governments, nonprofit organizations, business associations, and private companies. The coalition is working to obtain congressional designation of the proposed Willamette Falls and Landings National Heritage Area. The city has been involved over the past decade in various issues pertaining to Willamette Falls and also to the National Heritage Area. In particular, the City Council adopted in March of 2015 a resolution supporting efforts to create a Willamette Falls National Heritage Area and urging designation of such by Congress. I will note that City Councilor Charlotte Leehan serves on the board of the Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition, but not in an official position representing the city at this time. If the City Council would like to have the city become a member of the coalition, the fee is $15,000 annually, and we would budget that for the start of next fiscal year, 2021, '22, effective July 1.
Counselor West?
Is this in tandem with the Willamette Falls Locks Commission at all? It sounds like it might have like some crossover, just for, and then what do we, what do we get for $15,000 a year to be part of a, that's an expensive club fee.
There, Counselor West, excellent set of questions there. The, there's no direct tie per se to the Willamette Falls and Locks Commission. However, indirectly, there's a great effort going on to promote the Willamette Falls area and to restore the locks. This pertains more to congressional designation of an area from Willamette Falls stretching all the way down to Kaiser as the National Heritage Area. And there's no new government regulations. All it is is really a marketing promotion. The National Park Service will spend money promoting this nationally. It will provide technical funds for assistance to the local government. So in many ways, we get national exposure for a very reasonable price, and really, in some ways, it's kind of our, part of our tourism and cultural affairs program in some ways. Counselor Leehan, as a member of the Board of Directors, may have some additional insight that she could offer.
She may have. Counselor Leehan, please.
Anyway, yes, this is a, really, a tourism piece. When this project first began, it was Willamette Falls Heritage Area, and we were supportive, but not a player. That was because the area it covered was from the mouth of the Clackamas to the mouth of the Tewalatin. So we're significantly upriver of that. When they were turned down for National Heritage status for that, the National Park said, you have to go to the Wheatland Ferry in order to tell the story appropriately. And so all of a sudden, the upriver became critical to them and obviously critical to the whole effort. So, and when you think of it in that regard, from the Wheatland Ferry to the Clackamas, the mouth of the Clackamas, Wilsonville is pretty much smack in the middle. We are a significant, could be a significant tourism recipient here. It does involve money coming, if we get National Heritage status, it involves some direct money. And this would put us in the position of being a major player along with Lake Oswego, Oregon City, West Lynn, as to how those funds are spent. And then whether I'm involved or not, the city of Wilsonville would have a seat at the table. It is the, it is involved with the locks because a lot of the people, the individuals involved with Willamette Falls and Landings are also very involved with the locks, including Wilsonville Concrete, which is a Wilsonville significant business. And they are the big drivers on the, and the big beneficiaries of opening the locks, the only real upriver business, commercial business. But eventually, we would like to see the recreational boats being able to come all the way up into the upriver from Portland, and we need the locks to do that. So they are, in tandem, the two things, they're separate, but beneficial to each other. So anyway, I think it, as we move forward, and especially as we develop Boones Ferry Park and get a landing for canoes and kayaks, for non-motorized watercraft at Boones Ferry Park, we will become a significant stop in that hole, especially in the Newburgh Pool between West Lynn and Newburgh.
Thank you, Counselor Leehan. And I also wanted to say that I think that as this develops further, our fantastic Willamette Valley area that we all know has great beauty because we live here, I think this gives us the opportunity to, if you might say, package up all of its greatest attributes and make sure that we're included in that as we develop our tourism strategy, and that by being a member, we would have, we would be a voting member and would be part of this, not just waiting to see what might happen, perhaps it would benefit us, perhaps not.
And also, I would say, add, there's only one other National Heritage Area west of the Rockies, and that's up at Puget Sound somewhere. So there are very few, most of them are out, are on the East Coast, you know, they have to do with the Civil War or, you know, other places, the Revolution or something. So it's a, it's a big deal to be a National Heritage Area. It brings a lot of tourists.
Do you think this may be able to include future activities or advancement of the Tonkin Trail work?
Well, there's, one of the members of the Willamette Falls and Landings Coalition is a board member on the Ice Age Floods Institute. So yes, it's, they're constantly bringing that to the fore. Also involved are the tribes, certainly the Grand Ron, they have a seat on the board, and they're trying to involve more of the Warm Springs Reservation as well, and some of the other tribes, Yakimaun, et cetera.
Well, thank you. I am noticing, oh, Counselor Lindvill, and I just want, trying to do my job here on our timing. Crunch, but Counselor Lindvill, please.
Yeah, I just have a question about language in this document, in the, particularly in the Memorandum of Understanding. It addresses the, when you go back and look at the bylaws for the, for the coalition, it says there are no members. We are not going for membership. So we are looking for a director position, I understand. And so it seems to me that we, it ought to state that, that, I mean, what it says in the MOU is that the lead representative for the coalition shall be its executive director, the lead representative for Wilsonville shall be city council member, Charlotte Leehan or designee. And it seems to me that that, it ought to state that our director for the city of Wilsonville shall be, and then, I mean, because we get to elect that position, and this MOU, I understand, would go on for a long time, would we need to have Counselor Leehan's name in the MOU? I mean, we know we're probably going, she's going to be the appointee, but it is a director position, is that not correct, Charlotte?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't really need my name in there. Certainly, the designees for Lake Oswego and West Lynn and Oregon City have shifted over time, depending on who was in, who was in office, who, what, who the electeds were because they are electeds. And I was there originally as a commissioner for Clackamas County. And then I left for a while because it wasn't about that. And then when they brought in the upriver, then they wanted me to participate again because I am upriver. So I came in, back in as a different, with a different hat than I had originally. But there's no reason for me to be there, to have my name in there.
Ms. Knaus, I guess my point is that it probably needs to say that the director for Wilsonville shall be an appointed city council member or something like that.
Mayor, can I just add that we're not asking anybody to approve an MOU tonight? It's just more of whether you're interested in joining. The MOU would go through a legal review, it would go through my office, we would wordsmith it, and Counselor Lindvill's comments would obviously be taken into account at that time.
Okay. So at this point, do we want to do a thumbs up on this? What is our?
Well, if you have any objections, if, because I intend to put this in the budget, so if there's any major disagreement on it, I would want to know that, obviously. But if you generally agree that this is a good thing for the city to be involved in, that's all I need to know.
Counselor Lindvill?
The only, the only comment that I need to make is that I know that there will be further expectations, as Mr. Ottenad understands, from the Willamette Falls Locks Commission for funding from the city of Wilsonville. And so I, I think we just need to take that into consideration as we're looking at additional funding, that this would not, I mean, I would hate for this to come up and say, well, oh, wait, wait a minute, why would we fund the locks commission when in fact we're funding the heritage? So there will be that request annually for that funding.
I think these are two separate things, and I'm supportive of it. I'm hearing good support. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Ottenad. And with that, we will move on to the next point on the work session, which is in the appointments to regional intergovernmental bodies. And we might be able to make up some time here because there's not much change, any change.
Correct, Mayor and council members. Essentially, there were two or three positions that you had left open from your last discussion. This is summarized in your packet on page 61, and that is our alternate to the Regional Waters Provider Consortium Board. And the other is the representative to the Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition, assuming that we will be going ahead and joining that organization.
And is there still a, I'm sorry, Mayor, is there still a need to have one, an additional member for the Metro Enhancement Committee? I know that's not the regional one, that's one of our local ones.
Yes, technically, both Metro Community Enhancement Committee and technically the Tourism Promotion Committee designation of council liaisons.
And I think we can do that at the next meeting. Is that correct?
I believe that Zoe Monahan has lined that up for the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll take care of those then. And just very briefly, I would like to suggest that Counselor Leehan be, I would like to see Counselor Leehan be the representative for the Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Coalition. I understand you're willing, Counselor Leehan?
Yeah, that would be fine.
And then there was one other one, Ms. Counselor West had talked about, had asked if there was an alternate allowed on the Regional Water Providers Board, because I don't think, we had a slot on that last time. We have found out, yes, we can have an alternate for that. And I was wondering if, sorry, I didn't get to ask you ahead of time, Council President Akervall, but if you would be willing to do that as an alternate.
I'm just looking in the packet to see when they meet.
Maybe the first Wednesday, quarterly, in the evening.
At 6:30. Okay, yeah, I think that that, that.
It's just an alternate. I'm sure Counselor West will cover all the meetings unless some amazing other thing happens.
Occurs.
Yes.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, Counselor.
So I'm the alternate for Council President Akervall for the, for with Willamette Intake Facilities Commission Board?
Right.
And the Regional Water Providers Consortium, she is the first, and that will be the alternate. Should alternates go to these meetings if they happen time to, or what is kind of the normal practice for an alternate?
I think that's a really good question. I think it depends on the topic. And I don't think everybody has to always go. I know that it does help to have that because then you can keep up with the topic alternatively to respect each other's time. You know, we are, we are expected to, for example, you can go to those meetings and update Counsel President Akervall along the way. If you find you're unable to go to a meeting, you know, get her updated for that meeting that you might ask her to cover. But I think we, does that help?
Is it, if you want to go to a meeting, even though you're an alternate, are you welcome to still go? Or do you only go if you're like asked to replace somebody?
I think you're always welcome to go. And I will say, and as an example, on Greater Portland Inc., they did not require an alternate, but I would like to have, you know, rotating participation so that we can have good participation. And there are some rules with some of these, I would say, but Mr. Ottenad, they are public meetings generally, so.
That is correct, and alternates are always welcome. At many of the meetings, the alternates will attend. Now that we're in Zoom, alternates are put to the side and you don't see them, you only see the people at the table. But oftentimes, alternates are in attendance.
And I think it helps us have a really good awareness and impact in our region as we're trying to get transportation issues addressed and all kinds of things. So I think, you know, we want to have very good coverage and also work with each other to manage our time and keep ourselves updated. So does that cover that topic, Ms. Ottenad?
It does.
Counselor Lindvill? Muted.
I'm just kind of confused because we weren't, we weren't really done with all the appointments yet, but the, for instance, like the C4 Metro Subcommittee?
Yes.
I think that one, I, I thought that was yours, but it looks like it was mine, but it was on a Wednesday, and it was like the 20th of January. So is this schedule not firm yet in terms of like the first Thursday of the month? What, we don't know that.
The Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, is that is a firm schedule?
Yes. And this was what we had intended.
The Metro Subcommittee, however, that is listed for, somehow that got changed, it got, that should be the third Wednesday.
Okay. Okay, that's what's confusing for me.
Yeah, no, you're correct. The item number two, the Metro Subcommittee, somehow that got changed, that should be the third Wednesday, 7:30 to 9:00 a.m.
Okay, that's where I was, thank you very much.
Is that going to be workable for you, Counselor Lindvill?
Actually, yes, that'll be better for me, actually.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for pointing that out.
I just was confused about which meeting it was supposed to be, so thank you.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other questions on this? I think we are covered. Thank you, Ms. Ottenad. And you have another item.
Yes.
We are now going to the legislative agenda.
Yes, the city of Wilsonville Smart 2021-22 State Legislative Agenda. Every two years, the staff bring before the council a proposed state legislative agenda that provides staff with guidance for public policy priorities that help us react to specific legislative proposals that may arise during the course of the legislative session. The city councils, the city legislative agenda is grounded in city council policies that have been adopted over time in the comprehensive plan, the master plans for very specific subjects such as water or wastewater. The state legislative agenda has been essentially the same for the past eight years. Occasionally, we've added a new item or modified. Staff this year from community development planning proposed to add a new item, 3.5, which pertains to encouraging the development of broad mix of housing types. And this is in response to the last legislative session, House bills 2001 and 2003 that created new mandates for cities pertaining to middle housing, as it's called. Over the course of the past year, the city council adopted an equitable housing strategy in June of 2020 that provided staff with guidance to provide this new legislative agenda item for your consideration. Usually, the staff, excuse me, the council would just give the staff a nod that indeed, this is the legislative agenda that they would like to pursue. Thank you.
And to discuss this, I did want to, I mean, sorry. We have some audio, something going on here, okay. Regarding the housing bill, I do think that is important. In the meetings I've gone to so far with some other Clackamas County Commissioners and also mayors, I think it really is important to pay attention to that housing bill so that we can, you know, do the best for our city.
Our planning staff has been actively engaged with LCDC staff in regards to the rulemaking for these house bills, and particularly how they would impact Wilsonville.
Is there, does anyone have any questions about the legislative agenda or comments? Councilor Linville?
Yeah, I just had a question on page 64, where it talks about the background on the draft state legislative agenda. And the last sentence in the second paragraph says, "The proposed 2122 State Legislative Agenda is modeled after the prior 1920 Agenda with two additions based on council actions over the past two years." But I could only find the one that related to the equitable housing. Did I miss something?
No, you are correct. Originally, I was going to try to find something about arts, culture, and heritage. But nothing quite rose to a legislative policy agenda item. So if we can figure something out, I'll try to bring that next time, maybe.
And then I just had one other question that was, well, no, I have two others. I'll be quick. On page 65, in that paragraph that is under the two state legislative issues of interest to Wilson, Wilsonville are already teed up for 2021. It does list two there. And, but the first paragraph, the first sentence in that paragraph says, "The I-5 facility caused a complete study for adding a northbound auxiliary lane." Should that be a southbound auxiliary lane?
The, that is correct.
Okay, all right, thought that was the case. And then the, my last comment has to do with the statement that's on page 67 that says, "During the 21, 21 legislative redistricting key questions the council should advocate," is about the, and I know we can do this later, but it has to do with the redistricting and whether we would be in one house and one senate seat. And the question is, "Staff plan to return later with considerations for council." And my question, which doesn't need to be answered tonight, is how will we get to that recommendation? Because, and I'm wondering, because it looks as if, and I, you know, I'm the newbie here, so I have to ask the questions, that most of this is coming from previous years. As I went down through everything, almost everything is, except the equitable housing, is based on years of 2000 to 2017. Not anything that has been done later than that. And so while I, while I'm not in the position of trying to redo all of this, I just wonder, are we, do we just continue to kind of rubber stamp? Or, you know, and I don't mean that in a negative way, but I mean, you know, pull from the old ones and just kind of move on? Or do we look at some kind of a process where we get out into the community and talk about legislative priorities? So, and it's just a piece for thought.
Councilor Linville, I think one part of that might be, there has been discussion on this at the council retreats or the goal-setting sessions and during the year on things that have come up and that do need attention. So that's one time that we can bring things up. Secondly, a lot of these are very long-running issues. So I think we should drop issues that we're not interested in, and that's something, one of the reasons that we're looking at this. I don't personally see that we have, we are moving away from any of these. I don't know if anyone else does have that.
I think one thing to offer would be is that this legislative agenda attempts to encapsulate council actions over the years that have involved a great deal of public input. So when the council has adopted the water master plan, or the wastewater master plan, or the equitable housing strategy, or the tourism development strategy, those all have gone through large, extensive public processes, and then we extract what you might call the kernels of the items that us staff need in terms of dealing with the legislative issues. So for example, we don't provide law enforcement directly, so we don't really have a law enforcement police plank. We don't directly provide emergency services, so we don't tend to deal with TVFRs type of issues as much. So we're much more focused, but at the same time, we do water and wastewater treatment that many cities do not do. So this agenda is unique to Wilsonville and attempts to have those issues that council has addressed over time that may arise in the legislative arena that gives staff guidance on how to react in a timely manner. Thank you.
And I think that as, oh, go ahead, Councilor West.
I just want to, I don't know if now is the right time to bring up a couple of questions that I have or if it should be a little bit later in the meeting. I know it's on the agenda that we'll be hearing from Representative Courtney Neron out of House District 26, which is basically all of Wilsonville, except for Charbonneau. And I have a question, a couple of questions regarding airport legislation. And I don't know if now is the time for me to ask those to Mark and Barbara, or if I should also address them later in the council meeting when we're hearing from Representative Neron.
Both forums could be fine, Mayor, Councilor West.
I would have a discussion. On that, we're running out of time, and that's, the airport is always something that has robust conversations. So I would hold up on that dialogue till the regular meeting.
I will wait. Thank you.
All right, so thank you. We do have other chances to talk about that, including Mr. Ottenad's next item, and we do have two more items.
Mayor, can I just interject that the item G on your agenda doesn't require any staff report or presentation? It's a pro forma annual report that we send to the state every year. Happy to answer any questions you might have on it. Councilor Aquavall had a question, we answered via email, so there's no presentation on that.
Okay, so that brings us to, so that, are you talking about the...
Item G.
Item G, we do not need to talk about it here. So we still have the proposed Aurora State Airport legislation, 10 minutes here.
Yes. Ms. Ottenad. Okay, very good. The city has a unique opportunity afforded to us by Representative Courtney Neron, House District 26, pertaining to the Aurora State Airport. He has proposed House Bill 2497 that essentially advances three primary objectives that have also been ones that the city of Wilsonville has endorsed for the past decade, pertaining to inclusive decision-making processes that comply with Oregon land use law and public processes for the Aurora State Airport. The legislation essentially creates a forum for intergovernmental communications and planning by specifying the formation of an intergovernmental agreement between the State Department of Aviation and the local governments of Clackamas and Marion Counties and the cities of Aurora and Wilsonville that perform to facilitate communications and collaborative planning for land use, transportation, environmental, infrastructure, and other issues of concern. The legislation would mandate an updated Aurora State Airport master plan that complies with Oregon land use laws and public process and FAA regulations and provides for a transparent decision-making process to implement the master plan update, as well as looking at environmental issues of concern. Finally, the legislation calls for creating a plan and a timeframe for the annexation of the airport into the city of Aurora for the provision of municipal governance and urban infrastructures to support growing operations at the airport. House Bill 2497, as we understand it, is a process bill rather than a results bill. That is, it sets up a process for creating a forum for discussions at the airport and for creating a new master plan without dictating what the results of these processes will be, per se. It was noted Representative Neron will appear during the council meeting to give a legislative update to council that will include information on this. She is requesting that the council specifically give her a request to sponsor this legislation in this legislative session pertaining to either this specific bill or more generally, the items that the city would like to see regarding an IGA, a new master plan, eventual annexation to the city of Aurora. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Councilor West?
Are we lobbying or taking a specific action or interest in any legislation that's going to ban marine watersports on the Willamette River up and down Wilsonville? Are we, are we talking about that? Is that on our radar?
Mayor, Councilor West, we're aware of that legislation, but we are not taking any role in it. It's not a part of our purview of our legislative agenda, and we've really not received any direction from council pertaining to that matter.
Thank you. And I know we have had some questions about that, Councilor West, and people who are really interested in it, but we don't have a direct role. So given that, I think we actually caught up with our timeframe somehow.
We did.
And I want to ask before we, it'd be nice to have a break. We're supposed to start at 7:30 at our full city council meeting. Are we still good to skip that last item, City Manager Cosgrove?
I'm available to answer any questions you might have on that. Like I said, it's just a pro forma report we have to file with the state. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Councilor Linville?
Just have a question about this item on the airport. What are, what are we going to be, is there action in the meeting that we will be asked to take?
So, yeah, that will be up to the mayor, under mayor's business, to decide whether she wants to make a recommendation. So that will, in the regular meeting, you would, you would need a motion and a second, and then you go into discussion to determine whether council wants to support that legislation.
I am, thank you, Councilor Linville. I do plan to, I guess, we do have a few minutes here, so I can slow down a little bit. We plan to, I plan to bring that up in mayor's comments. And I would like to ask for the council's vote on if we ask, on asking Representative Courtney Neron to sponsor this bill. Councilor Linville?
So, Your Honor, in the, on the agenda, the order of the agenda for the meeting, it looks like mayor's business is before Representative Neron's presentation. So we would be asked to address this prior to hearing from her?
Well, that is how we said have it flowing at the moment.
Yeah, you have the ability, Mayor, if there does a desire to hear from Rep. Neron first. I think Mr. Ottenad fairly well laid out what the legislation is, so I don't think that Ms. Neron's going to add anything to that. She intends to provide you a wider update of legislative initiatives, not just on the proposed bill. But if you desire, all you need is a motion and a second to switch up the agenda. You control the agenda, so if you want to do that, you can.
May I suggest that we, can we continue mayor's business after the communication part? Can we do it in two pieces?
You can, or you can just simply have a motion and a second to move public presentations before mayor's business.
And I'll do that at the meeting.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not going to do that.
Yes, you can't do it now because you can't vote. You need to do it at the top of the meeting.
Councilor West?
Is it common to have procedurally, per protocol, is it common to have us make a vote on supporting proposed legislation and then not have it on the actual formal agenda? To have people have that opportunity, citizens, to come and comment if they'd like? Or, you know, if it's just brought up on like, you know, we're hearing from Neron, and it's a little bit vague, and then we turn around and put it on the agenda? Is it a better practice to put this on next week's agenda necessarily? So there's just a little more transparency?
I think there's some timing issues involved here. And I'm not sure if Mark is wanting to weigh in on that or not, but go ahead, Mark.
Mayor, Councilor West, City Manager Cosgrove, these are all good questions. Technically, we could have some time. There, technically, we have until February 19th, as noted in the staff report for the introduction of legislation. I do believe that the representative would appreciate, though, being requested sooner than that. However, your next council meeting, I believe, is February 1st. So that would be an option if the council so wanted to choose, I believe.
Councilor West?
I would just like to really encourage the council to maybe, if we are going to take a vote on something like this, just for maximum transparency, that we really consider moving it to the meeting on the 1st and allow for discussion maybe to happen tonight and introduce it. For a lot of people, this is such a big topic and a hot topic that I think it really behooves us to be as transparent on possible and to really allow people to have a little more opportunity to speak to it.
Well, I do want to say, I hear what you're saying. This has been on our legislative agenda for many years, and we have been talking about having a better process and a way to have a seat at the table. So that's the reason behind this, wanting to do this. But, Councilor Linville?
Well, I, I know what our position as a council has been for quite some time. And I don't know that our position would change at any point. I think if there is time and we do allow input and we hear it, it does, we still can take the action that we would like to take. But one of the things that we, I think, have criticized our airport colleagues about is their lack of transparency and trying to rush things through. Even the Oregon Aviation Board in terms of them creating their meeting in Sun River and rushing through that public hearing. So I, I think that, I guess there's just, from my perspective, if we're going to, if we're going to make a recommendation, I would like to provide an opportunity for anybody to be heard, including our stakeholders. So I would support that, I think, as well.
I appreciate that. Councilor Lehan?
The difference in this and other matters that have come before us with regards to this is that this is not asking for us to do anything or take a position other than to get that seat at the table. So it's very hard for us as a city council to say, we're just kind of, I don't know, do we want a seat at the table or not? You know, because why would we not want a seat at the table? That's what this is. That's what this is, is a process bill. It doesn't say you may do this, you may not do that. It's not, there isn't anything there other than we would like to get together and include Wilsonville, Aurora, Clackamas, and Marion. All the players need to be present. I mean, and that's as transparent as you can get. We haven't had that before. We have always said that's what we are interested in having, is everybody there with everybody having a voice. So it would be kind of odd now to have our representative stepping up and saying, would you like me to present this so that you would have a voice? And we'll say, well, we need to think about it a little bit more if we really want to have a voice or not. I mean, and the thing about the legislature is it moves at the speed of the legislature. So if you, and it only gets faster, as everybody sitting on this council knows, once we get into the session, things move faster and faster. We have to be certain of where we are and not be waffling around with our representative and with maybe this week, maybe next week, whatever sort of thing. So this is not a bill intended to do anything other than give us a seat at the table.
Mayor Fitzgerald and Councilman, I will note that that is correct in the sense that this bill is completely in alignment with all previous city testimony on this matter regarding the airport, about the IGA, the new master plan and annexation to the city of Aurora. So I will note that it is completely consistent with every position we have taken previously. Also, I would note that the city council here conducted the largest public forum ever held by any government on the Aurora Airport in November of 2018, when over 200 people attended, and gave the city council quite a bit of their thoughts on this matter.
And I would add, we do not have the same position as Aurora. They hold a different position than us. We don't have the same position as Clackamas County or Marion County, and they are different from each other. So it's not like we've all gotten together and come up with a plan. What we're, what this legislation is about is saying we all deserve to be there with a seat at the table and have this conversation about the impacts on these various jurisdictions. And we know we don't agree on everything. We don't have to wait until we have agreement from all the parties because what we want is the ability to discuss the issues.
I, just really, can I jump in really quick here? I just know that I still have, I still have very legitimate questions that I feel like I want to answer, and I have heard from other constituents who also do. And so we may think that it's just that clean cut and dry, and it's not a change and all those things, and we can just move forward with it. I just know that that's not everyone's opinion, and I would like to err on making sure that we are holding to that value of maximum transparency and opportunity to even hear from those that may have a difference of opinion.
And I do, thank you, Council West. I do want to recognize that we did hear even you saying that we should have an IGA during the campaign. And so we have to, some way to start talking about this. And so Representative Neron does need our direction to be able to do that. And I'm understanding there is some risk in waiting by slowing things down. Can we, what I would suggest is we, I will ask for a vote to reverse the order of those agenda items so that we can hear from Representative Neron and then have the mayor's business after that.
Yes, Mayor, so you would do that under item C. When there's a motion to approve the following order of agenda, somebody would make a motion to amend the agenda, to move public presentation before mayor's business. That would be the motion.
Thank you.
Yep.
I believe we can now adjourn our work session. And what is the, Mr. Cosgrove advised me on the technical step of moving to the next meeting, please.
Well, you'd stay with the same link. Just mute your microphones and turn off your cameras and give us seven minutes, and then we'll do the whole shutting off of the light thing, and then we'll be ready to go. So about 7:37.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Are you going to mute us too? Okay.
Are we muted?